I think it's like seventeen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, one hundred and sixty compared to like.
I call this meeting of the Cedar Wally City Council to order. Thank you all for coming. Please rise and join me with Plague Slay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for coming. This leads us to roll call, Cheryl.
House Member Judith Kennedy.
Here.
House Member Jane Marie.
Here.
House Member Reddick Henson.
Here.
House Member Julia Johnson.
Here.
House Member Chuck Holland.
Here.
House Member Rick Glenn.
Present.
House Member Frances.
Here.
Okay, and I am also here. Item D is approval of the agenda. I would ask the council tonight to amend the agenda to add two special guests. Noah Bannister from Hospice of the Northwest and Andrew Miller from EDAS. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose a nay. Thank you, council. Next up is our consent agenda, items one through four.
Mr. Mayor, may I motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion was made by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Owen, to approve the consent agenda, items one through four. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose a nay. And the motion carries. Okay, now that brings us to special guests and presentations, and I always love these. We're going to be swearing in a new police officer. Derek Lowe, if you'll come up.
Is that all, Lou? So, you were raised in very senior years. Okay. Yeah, to me. I, Derek Lowe.
Hi, Derek Lowe.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Perform the duties of office, a police officer.
Perform the duties of office, a police officer.
In and for the city of Cedar Wally.
In and for the city of Cedar Wally.
Skagit County, Washington.
Skagit County, Washington.
And such duties are prescribed by law.
And such duties are prescribed by law.
So, how we got. Congratulations, and welcome to the council.
So, for those that didn't know, we got Derek going off to the academy.
Was this one of the things he just approved?
And he's such a great drughead out here, from North Carolina. She's a new competitor, at least over a decade with the internet. And the drug can go on here, and we're taking advantage of the whole world thing. So, looking good getting Derek started. He's already working, we've got a good man working there. He's been Tamara Jason's, I go to Lloyd to do stuff. But we're thrilled for him to be on the road, and crucial for us. So, welcome.
Next up, if you remember last month, we had, we declared the month of November Hospice Month, and due to a miscommunication, we didn't have anybody here to represent Northwest Hospice. So, is Noah Bannister.
Yeah.
Come on up, and the mic is yours.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for supporting us, reading the proclamation last week or last month, and allowing us time to make comments today. Hospice is not a place. It's a special kind of care that gives you the power to live your life as you choose, to be at home, to be with the loved ones, to be pain-free, and to be comforted and cared for when no one can no longer be cured. It's about how you live, and it's about the life, or, excuse me, living life to the fullest. Throughout the month of November, Hospice of the Northwest is reaching out to raise awareness about the quality of care available for people coping with life-limiting illness. In the past 12 months, Hospice of the Northwest has served 680 patients and their families in Skagit County, with 117 of those patients here in Cedar Wally. We want to thank donors in this community and for whose support the Hospice and the Northwest Foundation, as they have a significant impact on the quality of life of those patients, as well as their families, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve this community and support that you've given us. Our region education team has scheduled 50 presentations this month, talks and meetings designed to share knowledge and provide educational opportunities through Skagit, San Juan Islands, and Homewood Counties. If you're interested in learning more, you can always come visit our webpage or give us a call. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Noah?
From a personal and professional aspect, you are a phenomenal organization.
Thank you.
You were involved with both of my parents during their end of life, and my cousin is a hospice nurse, and professionally, I hear it all the time from families saying that your organization has been phenomenal, helped them through a very hard and trying time. So, thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you, Noah. All right, next up, Andrew Miller from EDAS has a short presentation for us. Paula, are you coming with?
All right, do come with, Paula. So, I made the, I had the opportunity to sit down and talk with Paula earlier this week about a, an initiative that we've, that kind of grew out of our cluster program that we are pushing at EDAS. So, within the arts, culture, and events and entertainment cluster, the idea came up, as has been battered around for probably 25 years, of doing a winter birds festival here in the county, because that's one thing that, from multiple months of deception passed, we've got winter birds, which is quite, quite interesting. So, this year, we decided to have, actually have a go at it. And so, two, there's two kind of tracks that are going with this. I guess from a program perspective, because it involves the entire county, we didn't, and there's no, no interest in prescribing what should happen, we're coming at it from a regional perspective. And so, for instance, really excited about what the city, so Mount Vernon stepped forward kind of to lead the flats and their area, but when I was talking to Paula about what the city and the school district was doing there, she said, you got, you got to come out and share what's going on. So, what the city of Mount Vernon is focused on, and it could work in any of the cities, is really twofold. It's bringing, it's taking this opportunity from mid-January, essentially Martin Luther King Weekend, through the end of February, which is a downtime for retail and for tourism, and saying, hey, the birds are here. We know that we actually have sophisticated birders that come from all over the world to see all the different birds that we have. We're not capturing that as a program. And we also have six and a half million people that live within 100 miles, that more likely than not, are looking for something to do on, on the weekends, and we've got these birds. So, how can we capture both of these and provide an opportunity, at the same time, taking advantage of the opportunity for enrichment for our own citizens? And so, and Mount Vernon's really stepped forward and said, hey, look, what can we do with the parks and with the schools, and partnering with the Skagit Audubon Society to do assemblies for the school kids, discuss what the birds are, why are they here, what does migration mean, from a conservation perspective, because many of us know that there are snow geese and, and the trumpeter swans are here, but we also have world-class raptors that are on San Bush Island and Far Island and up here, and of course, the bald eagles during the entire month of January. And so, that was, that's really been approached, is how can we, the people that are already coming, what can we do from a tourist perspective to capture that experience and to enrich that experience, but also, what can we do for our own citizens? So, the libraries are stepping forward, saying, okay, let's, let's do programs, seminars in the parks, park departments saying, hey, we should do a seminar on, on why the birds are here, but at the same time, photography and some of these other things. Also, downtown Mount Vernon is looking at doing displays, window displays for the birds, to try to bring people downtown, because again, it's January, February. It gets dark pretty early, but in using the link in downtown Mount Vernon to do bird talks or documentaries or things that are of interest for the people that are in town for the birds. So, that's, that's also something that's moving forward. The town of Leconner is taking a similar approach and figuring out that they could do a, an expo of something that the bird, the bird enthusiasts are interested in, the optics, cameras, and spotting scopes, and binoculars, and things that would bring people in there. And so, this is zero year, so we're not, there's no, no marketing that's really going out, working really hard with the conservation groups to say, because it, we, this whole thing succeeds if we can have a more informed citizenry and our tourists and our guests kind of pushing out almost a code of ethics, and helping them understand what they can do to protect the birds. I was unaware, but the number one cause of death for trumpeter swans is flying into power lines, and they only fly into power lines if they get spooked. So, trying to inform the people that are coming, you know, stay away from the birds, or what's a safe distance, and using best science for that. So, that's, that's, and also public safety, because we've got people that are coming here that have never driven on a country road before, and stopping in the middle of a country road is not a good idea, especially in both directions, as you're headed out to San Bush Island or, or along Highway 20, stopping in the middle of the road to see the bald eagles is not a good idea. So, what can we do? And at the same time, protecting private citizens' rights, right? So, we, people, the farmers, they love that the birds are there somewhat, depending on who you're talking to, as long as they're not getting in on the winter wheat. But, and then at the same time, maybe trying to figure out how we can use this to actually put some revenue back in the farmer's pocket as some kind of an agritourism opportunity. So, that's some of the ideas that are flying around on that. So, we're really excited, this is zero year, nothing is prescribed, we're really excited about working with the cities, and especially the chambers, to figure out what's the right solution for each, each city and town, as people are coming in, and also for the enrichment of our own citizens. So, that's, that's what I know about that. We've got a, just today, for hot off the pressure, the initial mock-up of our zero-year poster. So, appreciate Brian Querry stepping forward on that.
Thanks.
A lot of energy and excitement on that. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about that, and answer any questions you might have.
Well, I just want to applaud your efforts on this, because, you know, people come to see the tulips, and they come in droves. I've seen this work in Corpus Christi, where they have a lot of birding down there, people come specifically for it, and if we can develop it like you have, let people know what's here, I think we'll draw a lot of people in, and that helps the economy. So, do you have any questions?
Well, yeah, I just want to kind of echo that, Mr. Mayor. Like, we take my boys out to Clear Lake for school, and I have just seen more photographers in the last week just taking pictures of like, you know, the handful of, you know, birds that are out in the fields than I, I have, you know, in, in all the time I've lived here. So, people are coming, they're stopping, they're getting out their giant cameras, and they're taking pictures, so, even in our neck of the woods.
Right, absolutely. And that's what's so, that's what's so great about it. It really is, it touches every part of the, of the county, and, and we think that's equitable, and that's something that we're trying to do. And it doesn't cost us any money, they're already here.
Yeah.
I have a question. I was wondering if the Bald Eagle Festival does work with the Conservation District at all? Usually, I don't remember.
No, I'm not sure on that. Jed Holmes, who's the Conservation District Chairman, he's very involved in this, and so he'd probably, I can reach, I'm meeting with him tomorrow on this very thing, I'll make sure. But we are in touch with the, with both the county, Bryan Adams, and the Bald Eagle Festival people to make sure. And right now, actually, that's the only reason there's overlap.
Yeah.
Because there's, there is a lot of concern, because hunting season goes through January 29th, so if we're bringing a lot of people up to see birding, that's probably not the part of the birding that they want to see is, is the hunters, and we want to, you know, we can live, this is an active tension, that's completely understandable. Our focus, or my vote, is that we try to get all those people up to Cedar Wally and upriver, where there's the duck hunting and the geese hunting isn't quite as good, but the eagles are still here during, until, until after the 29th of January. But we'll see how that works.
Yeah. Thanks.
You bet. Good, any questions? Thank you, Andrew. You bet.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I have talked to NCI, to the Central Skagit Library, and Eagle Haven Wine Room, all about participating in this as well. And just today, in the tourist center of our Chamber of Commerce, we had a person coming in, saying, where are the eagles? And so, I just thought I'd add that.
Maybe we need a map for people.
Yeah, I gave them the bike.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have a special presentation by Community Action from Joan Penny. Joan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Thank you for your service. And tonight with me is our Director of Operations, Lynn Christopherson, and our Board Chair, Commissioner Ron Weis, so I thank them for being here tonight as well. So, first of all, I thank you for the line item in the budget for 2017, which was the $5,000 that you gave to Community Action for Critical Needs. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. We also want to thank the mayor for the meeting he had with Bill Hinkle, our Executive Director, and Susan Lang, our Development Director, just last month. My present tonight, presentation tonight is a follow-up from that meeting, and will be focused on the economic impact, specifically to Cedar Wally, that Community Action has. We hope that this information brings more light and understanding about why we are here requesting this one-time capital request from you for $50,000. Community Action is the second-largest nonprofit in Skagit County. Nonprofits overall contribute 8% in salary and wages in our county. Think of that number if it were an unemployment figure, that would be pretty significant. So, we are a, we are a considerable employer in this community. In addition, there have been a significant number of capital projects that nonprofits have brought forth through Skagit County. Think of the Catholic Church's new building in Mount Vernon, the Celtic Arts Foundation's building in Mount Vernon. These are significant multimillion-dollar impacts for construction. Nonprofits contribute significantly to our econ, to our economy, and that includes Community Action. We have 88 full-time employees, 33 of those live in Cedar Wally. So, just like large for-profit businesses or nonprofits, we have to look at the economic forecast for our organization. The Red Cross, one of America's finest nonprofit organizations that we all look to in times of emergency, and especially in these horrific weather patterns that we've seen, we are very much like them in a number of ways. Specifically, when they go into a weather scene or a natural disaster, they work with partners to understand the weather patterns, they consider the flooding, the heat, the drought, they consider the shelter that people will need, and they map out the response, they map out the size of the response that they will need. We do the same. We look at data, and we look at what our response to our community needs to be. It informs our budget, it's data-informed decision-making at our board level, and especially through our staff, and in turn to our clients. We know that the county-wide housing shortage, quantified and qualified by valid data sources, is really the local hurricane that we are adjusting to and responding to. Our current service-size center is not going to work for that forecast. We are currently at 12,000 square feet, and the service center that you have in front of you is the 27,000-square-feet center that we hope to move to in Burlington in 2018. We know that between the 88 employees that we have and the 32,000 people that came through our front door in 2016, that 12,000 square feet is just not cutting it. So, we know that these numbers are going to continue to grow, as the difference between what people make and what the cost of living is, we know that difference drives people to our door. That's our mission. Our door is wide, and we welcome it, we want to help people in any way that we can. So, the challenge for us to do a capital project is that none of our funds that we are granted can go for capital. They are for services. They are service dollars that benefit our clients directly, and in turn, the cities and the counties that we serve. Some specific examples when we break down these service dollars here, especially in Cedar Wally, these are numbers from 2016. Over $19,000 was spent in Cedar Wally just in 2016, providing assistance to citizens to help them stay in their housing and to keep jobs. That 19,000 includes things like bus passes, food vouchers, utility disconnect fees, gas for generators, gas for labor, workforce travel, and employment travel, clothes, vouchers, medical expenses, car repairs. And of course, we see, you see a return on that in terms of retail sales tax. Another figure which is very significant is the energy assistance that we provide. And in 2016, we provided over $1 million just in Cedar Wally for energy assistance, $1,2487 is the exact figure. By keeping people in their homes, this allows them to pay taxes, it helps them with retail purchases, it keeps landlords with steady incomes. We work with renters and homeowners to stay sheltered and coach them through their hurricane, their financial storm. This also includes seniors. Did you know that we have a volunteer program that provides firewood for seniors? We have a tremendous volunteer workforce that will build wood sheds and help seniors to do a disability makeover for their home, to keep them housed. And that's significant. This year, we also, excuse me, in 2016, we spent over $22,000 at the Skagit Farm Supply just on propane, to help people with that one bill, to keep them housed, so they could focus on mortgage, they could focus on medical, they could focus on food. But that's the bridge that we help provide. It's monitored, there's accountability with that. It's not a handout, it's a handup. The Food Distribution Center, which you all know and support in your budget as well, and Cedar Wally spends money on local produce annually approximately $10,000, just on produce, and another $5,000 on protein. We also purchase all of our petroleum in Cedar Wally, as well as oil changes for our trucks, and any other machinery that we use at the center. We provide storage space for local food banks, including Helping Hands, and so that means the utility bills that we pay and cover are also part of the local revenue. We're very proud of that organization and all the partners that we work with in that, in that facility. We cannot, by contract, take these service monies and move them over to a capital project. We just can't do it. You would not want us to do that. That is exactly why we are here tonight, to ask for help with a one-time capital fund request that will serve our over 32,000 citizens from this entire county in the right-sized services center that you see before you. Our accountability for these funds is built into the checks and balances within our agency's system and our governance processes by our board. And I want to thank Julia Johnson and Jermaine Carnegie, who also serve in our organization and who are representatives for us to your council. We just finished our most recent audit with flying colors, no findings, only some minor recommendations. So, the return on investment that you see with us is significant. So, flipping that, I ask you to think about what Cedar Wally might look like and feel like, if the surfaces that we offer were not available. How would your conversation change around your budget? How much more would you be spending in social services in your budget? How much more would you be spending in law enforcement, or parks and rec cleanup? We really not only work with homeless, but we work with trying to keep people in their homes, especially in this disparity between what they make and what housing is costing. And that disparity, with the best of forecasting and the best of data, is going to be with us for some time to come. So, this one-time investment is significant. You can't do what we do for the price we do it for, and by the sheer nature of our being a nonprofit. We are your partner. We have a common cause in our mission, and that is specifically the citizens that we serve. So, as your partner, we ask you for your help with this one-time capital request. And with that, if you have any questions about the services center layout that you see, I'm glad to take any questions that you have.
Counsel?
I know you expand very little on your employees' pay and whatnot. Can you tell us exactly what that is, what percentage that is of what you have, of the budget?
So, our administrative, when you look at national standards around what administrative costs should be for nonprofits, that's always a piece of data that's important for donors, especially large donors, because they want to make sure that that dollar is really going to services, and specifically the mission. And ours is less than 8%. Now, it doesn't mean that there is an overhead with running a nonprofit. We see some pretty large overheads, and we should, for nonprofits that fight cancer. We ask nonprofits to do some pretty heavy lifting, fight cancer, fight poverty, and do it for nothing. That's a tough thing. So, we work really hard to keep that administrative cost down.
I was wondering what the timeline is that you guys are facing right now.
Thank you, Jermaine. So, we have a letter of intent with Dan Mittel and Patty Brookland, the owners of 160 Cascade Place, and that letter is of March 2018, to come up with 2.7 million. That's the other thing that we really worked hard on with our board, is two years of reviewing properties and sites. We really heard from our donors and our community, please use existing buildings, there's so many empty ones, don't try and build new. When we started penciling that out, at 250 to 275 a square foot, that just made no sense given our mission. So, at 2.7 million, that's about $100 a square foot, that is good business, that is a good return, and we think it's the right-sized building for our future.
And I just have one comment, because I've actually been into the building where you're at now several times, and it is cramped quarters, and sometimes there is nothing more than just a sheet between one desk and another, and people are being interviewed, and the situations sometimes are pretty horrific. So, I'm fully aware of how crammed you are into that building, and I wish everybody would have the opportunity to see that. You are in need of a new building. And I also want to comment on looking at the schematic that you have here, it's impressive that the majority of it is for the services for the people, very little of it's going to administration.
Thank you, that's very true. One thing that we're particularly proud of is that we have all the posts and VFW's endorsements for our Skagit Vets Connect Center. We have the George Balridge Post 43, American Legion, and the Vietnam Veterans of American Chapter 1109 from Cedar Wally, who endorse the center. We do not have a centralized location for veterans' services, and this new building will allow us to do that. We have five full-time staff from various funding sources that do nothing but veterans' benefits. And how wonderful would that be, on Burlington Boulevard, to have that visibility for more veterans to know where we are, without having, with all due respect, a VA, where there are more barriers presented by processes and paperwork.
Yeah. And privacy.
Yes.
Well, Joan, thank you for a great presentation.
Yes.
I've heard, this is the second time I've heard it, because as you mentioned, I got the private one.
Yes.
And at the time, and it's still true, I told Bill, you could not have come at a harder time for us.
Yes.
Having just pledged $50,000 to the YMCA in exchange for a Cedar Wally swim night once a month over the next five years, this council came under a lot of criticism. I believe we did the right thing, and there's so many good causes out there. You make a compelling case. Personally, I don't see how we could get to that number. It's just too big of a number for our budget. Maybe we could go back and talk about something more modest, because we're not selfish, we want to help. I understand the value, I mean, you stated it very well. It's on the council to guide me, I guess, but, but that would be my position as a mayor. It's too big of a number.
We're certainly interested in any kind of multiple-year pledges. I don't know about your, your codes and conditions that would confine that kind of an agreement, but it's certainly something that would help us with a short-term bridge loan, if we had documentation that we had a... documentation that we had a multiple-year commitment from a leading municipality. But I respect your situation, and we again stand here as a very sympathetic partner.
And now I'm looking at my city attorney, because in the case of the YMCA, we had to get value back for the city. And your value might be a little hard to put in a basket so that we could stay within the legal aspects of how we spend money. I don't know, do you have an opinion there?
We do do intake with our clients by zip code, so...
You know, the city already contributes to community action for direct assistance, as Joan mentioned, so I suspect we can find a way to ensure that the value is there. We really haven't talked about how something like that could be structured. I imagine you're having similar conversations with Annakordis and Auburn and Burlington and...
That's correct.
And the county, and we all have the exact same constraints.
Yes.
Another question that I guess comes to my mind is, would there be any value in reconfiguring our annual contribution to allow it to be used for capital? You know, let's say the city council could find a way to do half, but maybe what we're already giving could be reconfigured, since I think I understand that you maybe have more dollars in operations, not than you need, but they're confined. If we were to unconfine ours, make it available for capital, would that be at all helpful?
We would certainly be willing to have that conversation, for sure. As you know, nonprofits have to quilt the pieces together very differently than a for-profit. And so we are used to those creative conversations, and we would welcome it.
So I guess the key would be understanding from the city council what you're interested in doing, and then I'm happy to work with, you know, community action and also reach out to our municipal partners to find out how they're doing this to ensure that it, you know, works. I don't see an issue with this entity, though. Again, we already contribute directly to the mission, you know, and clearly directly serves the community.
I would like to see us have that conversation.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you again.
Thank you all.
And it looks like we have some things to think about. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you all very much.
Was there another question?
I just...
Oh. Okay, thanks, Joan.
Good night now.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item G, staff reports. And I'm looking at Chief Tucker.
Just a couple of things. I'm out of town this week over in Mount Vernon at a tactical communications training, and then next week I'll be in Shalan for WASP at conference. I'll be checking my email if anybody has anything, and Jason will be here covering for me in my absence. And we had a department meeting yesterday, and we ran a couple of tabletop scenarios, and one of them was a threat based in this building. And based on that training, we're going to develop a, probably a broader training exercise for City Hall, hopefully after the first of the year. I'll be running that by Aaron, the mayor, and all involved, just to kind of run through the ideas that we're talking about, start thinking about potential safe areas to evacuate to, and basically an active threat inside the building and how we're going to react to it. So we've got three active shooter instructors that are taking this task on, and we're going to be looking at maybe some ideas for changing some file cabinets and stuff like that around in different places to see if that will help make it a little safer environment if we have people have to evacuate. So Jason's committed to getting this set up the first quarter next year, and we'll work out all the details. And that's all I have, other than we're happy to have Derek on board and getting him working, and he's already helping out and working in records and patrol already, so he's going to be a great asset once we get him full-time.
Thank you, Chief. I should tell our guests, you're not obligated to stay and suffer through the rest if you prefer not to. We don't feel offended. Chief Klinger.
Just one short item, in case you're wondering, we're doing our firefighter one certification testing for some of our new people over at the main site in case you were wondering what's going on over there. The state's actually auditing us this year, so it's been an interesting day for poor Todd, so he's...
He looked a little stressed.
He's a little stressed today, but he is getting through it. They'll finish up tonight.
Excellent. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we had a report on our snow and ice meeting at Public Works the last council session. I just wanted to say, since Aaron is here, Nathan is here, we are prepared. We did have the first snow, of course, about two and a half inches, but didn't have to mobilize for that, but we are ready, and that's all I have to talk about tonight.
Okay, thank you. Judith, since we're skipping Aaron for a minute.
Yes, addressed to Mark. For several years now, I've been mentioning that there's really a need for a crosswalk on Cook Road and Trail. Today, scurrying across, I blew out my knee, so really would like a crosswalk at Trail Road and Cook.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, Judith, I'm sorry about your knee. Jermaine?
That's funny, because I was actually going to talk about a crosswalk, too. But just an update, I was just wondering if you heard anything about the one at the Evergreen, going towards Evergreen and the middle school, crossing over Highway Nine at, I guess, McGargo and John Lina right there? You said something about the state was going to put it in with one of their projects, is that right?
Well, we have our sidewalk and ADA ramp improvement project planned for 2018, includes the LED lighting up type of crosswalk signs, the pedestrian actuated, and that's planned for that particular intersection for next year.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I remember you saying that now, thank you.
There's also one at the State Street High School on State Street as well.
Thank you. Nice.
Brenda?
Nothing, can I...
Julia?
I'm just curious, Mark, we had the conversation about roads, projects that are going to be happening here in 2018, and one thing that had been discussed here in council was the Talcot from Central to Township. Is that on the agenda at all?
It's not presently on our agenda. Council did ask me to prepare an estimate for that, and I haven't done that yet, but I do have that on my list of things to do for you.
All right, thank you.
Rick?
You want me to talk about the next meeting or something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a reminder that for our next meeting, it will be on Tuesday in two weeks, so that will be on twenty-first, Tuesday evening, rather than Wednesday for the Thanksgiving holiday. This Saturday, at our funeral home, we are having a veterans' memorial program, inviting all of you that have served this country. We certainly invite all of you and the general public to attend. We have a retired naval rear admiral coming to be as our guest speaker. Our wonderful mayor is going to be involved in the ceremonies, that we have erected a new monument in our flower bed in the front of the funeral home dedicated to those men and women who served our country in the military service. And our mayor will be dedicating that on their behalf to the community, so we invite all of you to come at eleven o'clock on Saturday. And so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Yeah, just making sure I had it on my calendar right. Brett?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, so I've been gone the past week. I have not dug through my mountain of emails yet, so if you have sent me an email or a letter, I'm going to get to it, but I'm a little bit behind, and I got a lot from the school kids at the high school that I owe answers to, and I'll catch up as quickly as I can. You may have heard that Senator Pearson has taken a position with U.S. Department of Agriculture. He's going to be in charge of rural development in our state. Kirk Pearson was a great friend of Cedar Woolley, a very effective legislator who worked well with both sides of the aisle and got things done. He's a great man, I'm going to miss him, I know he's going to do great things going forward. That leaves an opening. So yesterday, I emailed the staff, and I'll tell you all tonight, I'm going to put my hat in the ring for that position. There's a possibility that I would be selected to fill the thirty-ninth Legislative District Senate seat. A lot could go wrong between here and now, but if in case that happens, I would vacate my mayor's seat, and we would have to select somebody. So now you know, and we'll see what happens. Perhaps nothing, but you never know. Okay, that brings us down to...
We've got a couple items.
Oh, that's right, we skipped Aaron.
Having left the seat, I apologize for that.
I like it when we skip Aaron.
Oh, somebody else can present, and that'd be all right.
No, please go ahead.
Two items on your dates tonight. One is my late materials item, requesting approval for a manual check in the amount of five thousand dollars to the Burlington United Lodge Ninety-three Masons. We discovered recently a joint misunderstanding, that is, for years, the city staff and the masons believed that the masons owned, you know, around twenty-five percent of the city's parking lot at the corner of Metcalf and Warner. And for years, we talked to the masons about, are we going to repave, are you, when are we going to do it? And this year, the masons agreed to donate about five thousand dollars to help pay for paving their portion of that lot. Well, as part of our library pre-design committee process, we've been looking at that as a possible library location, and we'll discuss that a little bit more separately. I started to do some title research to understand just who's who in the zoo at that location. So as you can see in my memo, the city parking lot lives on three lots, lots twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Lot twenty-four is the one that's on the Metcalf side, and lot twenty-four is a little bit smaller than lots twenty-five and twenty-six, but in fact, you can see it on the schematic I gave you, lot twenty-four is just a little bit skinnier. So the city acquired lot twenty-four back in nineteen thirty-eight for five dollars. And then years later, in nineteen seventy-one, the city spent another fifty-four hundred to acquire lots twenty-five and twenty-six. So the sum total of the city's area, based upon not survey-level work, but tape measure level work that Nathan and I executed, takes us all the way to the curb line, which is the edge of the parking lot nearest the masons. With that information in hand, we now realize that the masons' payment to cover their share in fact just covered our share, because they don't have a share, it's not their lot. And it doesn't seem quite right to take money with the misunderstanding that what they were paying for was their portion that they happily allowed for years to be jointly used between them and the public. So my request is to return their five thousand dollars. I just think that that's the right thing to do. They have not actually asked for it, and you know, if they say, keep it, then we'll bring it back, but it just doesn't seem quite reasonable based upon our joint misunderstanding to keep those dollars. So I'm requesting authority to give them back that five thousand dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll skip that.
I think you're writing on it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize you to cut a manual check in the amount of five thousand dollars to the Burlington United Lodge Ninety-three Free and Accepted Masons for the reimbursement of their five thousand dollars towards the municipal parking lot.
Okay. A motion was made by Councilmember Lemley, seconded by Councilmember Owen, authorizing me to cut a manual check in the amount of five thousand dollars to Burlington United Lodge Ninety-three Free and Accepted Masons.
Mr. Mayor, I need to make a recuse of myself.
Noted. Councilmember Sandstrom recuses himself as he is a mason. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you, counsel.
The second item on my report tonight is just on the status of the library, the new library pre-design committee work. We're continuing to meet, just as I mentioned last time, really trying to narrow down that final site recommendation to bring back to the city council and district board. And what I gave you tonight that shows the city parking lot also shows scaled in there how a library could fit on that location. And so I'm bringing this to the city council tonight, not as the project partners with the library district, but in your role as owners of that property, with a question from the new library pre-design committee, which is, would the city entertain the use of that property for a new library site? So we're really looking at that site, and we're looking at the old feed store site on State Street, but there's a strong preference to be located on Metcalf Street. And so the committee, I think you're familiar with some of the earlier conversations, and we've looked at probably ten or twelve different locations, and one of the cornerstones of our work has been the underlying intent to acquire property from a willing seller. So we've run into a whole number of sites that were really preferred sites that are not available without the governmental use of eminent domain. And so taking those off the list by running into sellers who've said, I'm not interested, I'm not interested today, or I'm not interested at, you know, your price that, you know, you may believe is fair market value, has really taken off a number of sites. For example, you know, the old Skagit building, the seller will be happy to talk to us in, you know, maybe two to five years. The old marketplace, we just can't get anywhere near a price conversation on that. You know, the property by Ronk Brothers, you know, again, not really interested in selling at this time. And so the question for you is, should the library's pre-design committee continue thinking about this as a possible site or not? How do you, how would you like us to proceed? Obviously, not looking for a final decision tonight, the process remains unchanged, which is that the committee has been tasked by agreement with generating a proposed location, concept design, and budget that ultimately comes back to the city council and district board for action following, you know, public meeting. But we're looking for some interim direction as to whether it's worth investing the time and energy to study this site in more detail.
So I just want to say that although it's clearly not my first choice either, I think there's some really good aspects of this site, but we are going to need to replace the parking. And there's ways to do that, there's with additional purchases perhaps, or with redesigns of streets and widening and putting in angle parking. But I think we should at least consider this location, in my opinion. Any comments from counsel?
All options on the table. I mean, I'm up for continuing a conversation on this. Thanks.
Ask.
Yeah, I think, you know, cities get creative when it comes to parking, and I've seen them in Fairhaven up in Bellingham, where they vacated streets and redesigned as a parking lot. So I think a lot can be done to recuperate the lost parking with this park.
Do you have enough direction for you, Aaron?
All right, I'll pass that feedback along to the committee, and we're still working with the architects, trying to get to the point where we could have the next architects' public meeting kind of communication back to the community with all of the results of the workshops and public input at the end of this month, so after Thanksgiving, to try to kind of keep us in line with our process, so we're wrapping up this in December. So stay tuned. As soon as we've got dates, we'll get those out to all of you and to the community, so people can make sure they're able to attend if they'd like to attend.
Okay, thank you. So that moves us to the public comment period. Now, we have recently changed our rules, so you may comment on things that are not on the agenda, except as a first read. If you want to comment on the available property tax refund levy or the 2018 budget as a first reading, wait till that period. But for general comments that are not first read items, this is your chance. You get three minutes at the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record, and remember, it's not a question-and-answer period or an interrogation, but you're speaking to the period or an interrogation, but you're speaking to the council. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Mary McGoffin, 268 Burrows Lane. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm here to talk to you about additional dwelling units, which I didn't even know that was the name. It came to my attention because my neighbor just moved in to his house, and there's a little house next to him, and I said, "Who's going to rent that?" He said, "Well, nobody. I can't use it. Our zoning doesn't allow a second residence on my lot." I thought, "You're kidding. With our housing crisis, this house is going to be vacant?" And he said, "Our zoning doesn't allow it." So, I went to your planning department yesterday, and I said, "Is this true?" And they said, "Yes, our zoning doesn't allow these additional dwelling units. Other cities do, but it's not in our code." And I said, "Well, who do I talk to?" And they said, "Well, you've got to go talk to the city council, so I'm here." So, I'm asking you to please review this zoning issue where we are not allowed to have additional dwelling units on a property. I think it'd be the fastest way to help ease our housing crisis is to, even if it's just one of those little teeny houses, it would still get hooked up to sewer and utilities. It could be regulated. It could be safe. The fire department would have a number, so when they get a call, they could find that person. I know your planning department's in favor of it, so it's really in your hands. I'm asking you, this is in your power to help ease this housing crisis right now. Just get this zoning fixed, and we'd be on our way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else for public comment period? Going once. Tony Splain, yes, sir.
Yeah, Tony Splain, 714 Sapporo. There was a thing brought up to meeting last night about library property involving the Episcopal Church property on State Street and the apartment buildings behind it that are kind of dilapidated. Has anybody ever thought about considering that plot for a library? Could be accessible to downtown, plenty of parking. Might be worth a look. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. In fact, I got a phone call about that today from Mr. Bates. Anybody else for public comment period? Phil.
Philip Murray, I live at 223 State Street, Seadrill. This library thing, you have a library, you have plenty of property around it. The little park there is pretty much useless. You took the slides out, and my grandkids don't want to go there at all now. You could add on to there, so easy and cheap, you already own the property. I don't know what the purpose is of trying to buy property, especially if it's a business piece of property that already brings you revenue into the city. Like the Alfie's Pizza Building, you wouldn't let them do it there because it was going to take away revenue from the city. And now, you're thinking about another place that has businesses in it, and I don't know what you're going to do with it, but they're going to have to move or something. And the other thing is the brush mower. Are you purchasing that or not? I'm not sure what you settled on, but I believe you have a little mini excavator that you could have bought a brush mowing attachment for and used that instead of spending $160,000 on a mower that only gets used three months out of the year and probably mows the ditches twice in that year. And if you took that money and bought a bigger excavator, then you could fix the storm sewers yourself out there and put a brush attachment on that and mow everything. Just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Anybody else? This brings us to a public hearing. General Property Tax Levy Ordinance, second reading. Erin, did you want to introduce this? Sorry.
I always like to talk about excavators. I'm excited about that. So, the property tax, this is a second reading and public hearing. I don't have a lot to offer from the last meeting, other than the City Council's presented with three different options, although you really have a lot more than that if you want them. The three different ordinances presented provide you the pathway to increase property taxes by 0%. If that's the one you pick, this will be the 10th year in a row that you'll have done 0%. You can go with 1%, which is the statutory maximum annual increase, or you can go 4.439%, which is that statutory maximum plus the banked capacity that the city currently has. All three of the ordinances assume that you're including new construction as taxable properties. So, there is an increase in revenue by virtue of growing the inventory of property, but not an increase in actual taxes to the existing properties. Well, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or maybe you want to hold them until after we hear from the public if anybody cares to testify.
At 7:56, we will open the public hearing on the topic of General Property Tax Levy Ordinance as described by Mr. Byrd. So, anybody who wants to make a comment during the public hearing, limit your comments to three minutes. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, also at 7:56. Council, second reading. The proposed motions are on page 34. As you know, our budget is written to include a 0% increase on property taxes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1885-17, an ordinance to the City of Seadrill, approving the property tax level at an increase of 0% with a modification that we do not bank the capacity.
Second.
Okay, that's built into the motion, so you don't have to modify it. But motion was made by Councilmember Sandstrom, seconded by Councilmember Kinzer, to approve ordinance 1885 tax 17, an ordinance of the City of Seadrill, approving the property tax levy at an increase of 0%. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
I...
Everybody's jumping, huh? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
I actually wanted to comment. I wasn't ready to vote yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I am looking at this, and I'm thinking that 1% is not a whole lot. I know it's important to you. I know it's important to you not to raise the property taxes at all, but given that things are, costs are going up, to kind of at least try to stay up, I don't see why we shouldn't consider, if nothing else, a 1% property tax levy increase.
Okay, so the motion was on the table, and I'll ask you if anybody was swayed by that. All in favor, say aye.
More.
For the motion that Brett made.
Aye.
Now, this clarification, because it doesn't actually say it's not banked. Where does it say that? Or is it just implied?
Also, the way the banking works is, in order to bank the capacity, the council would levy the 1%, but not take it. And it's that differential. In this case, we're not doing that. So, that is pretty significant, really. The City Council, over the course of the past decade, you know, I think you're looking at, at this point, probably close to $200,000 a year, each year that's not collected by not taking the 1%. And by not banking it, you don't have the capacity to pull those dollars in the future if you need it. The way I've looked at it, I guess my biggest concern for the city is really the fire department at the point where we have to take that quantum leap from our volunteer system to a different system. I believe we'll have set ourselves up to require a vote of the people to do a levy-lid lift. So, as long as, you know, you just have to be mindful about those ramifications, because we will not have kept the capacity in the bank as well as not taking it. But that's how it works in the ordinance, is the council would actually increase by 1%, but levy a dollar amount that's equal to 0%. That differential then is captured and is banked capacity for future. And that's what the ordinance shows at the 0% level, is no banked capacity.
Thank you.
So, just to be sure, I will reread. Motion was made by Councilmember Sandstrom, seconded by Councilmember Kinzer.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify that I'm understanding this. So, taking 1% and then banking it would allow us to maybe help the fire department out in the future.
No, what it does is it allows the council the capacity to levy those dollars in the future, should a future council deem that necessary. So, right now, the council has 4.43% of bank capacity, well, 3.43% bank capacity, which that's about $60,000. So, if it's there, you could say in one year, we're going to use it, whereas otherwise, you're limited to the 1% maximum under state law. So, the fire department issue is one we've talked about year after year, and that is, you know, we're going to hit, you know, we're guessing 2,400 calls this year, and a department that has a net cost to the city of less than a million dollars. At some point, our system's not going to work, and we're going to end up jumping that budget by probably a factor of a million dollars in one year. So, the big question then is, how do you fill that gap? And it's going to take a lot of different sources to get there. So, I'm not trying to derail where you're at. I just, I wanted to answer both the banking question, but also, you know, the philosophy behind the banking is that you don't want to take it today because you believe you don't need it, but the possibility exists that you might need it in the future. So, therefore, you've left it in the bank. The council's philosophy has been, we don't trust that the future won't use it. We don't want to let the council of, you know, two years or five years from now do a big 10% tax increase. So, we don't want it in the bank because we don't want to see that quantum leap, and that's obviously your prerogative.
And what Erin just suggested there is, in fact, my philosophy, because I would not want a future council to be able to reach back, take the maximum of four plus all the bank, and have a huge tax increase all at once. I think it's dangerous to leave it in there.
And that gives the, it would defer the question then to the public, at a public vote, correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, if you had to raise a million bucks in a year, I think you would probably be looking at a conversation of a levy-lid lift. You'd be looking at utility tax increases, some other rate increases. You know, it would be kind of an all-hands-on-deck to do that in a city of our size with our, you know, taxable income. It would be a very significant issue, and it's one that I'm not the least bit excited to face, and so, we should all thank Dean and encourage him not to retire any earlier than absolutely necessary.
Thanks, Dean.
So, are everyone's questions answered? The motion is on the table?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay?
Nay.
Well, that's interesting.
What do we have, 3-3?
We're going to have a show of hands.
Show of hands, please, aye.
1, 2, 3, 4. The nays? 1, 2, 3.
The motion carries.
Did you get that show for the minutes? And the negative.
Great. Very good. Moving on to item K2, utility rate increase, second reading. That's page 40 or 51 on your packet. Erin.
So, we've also got these ordinances noted for public hearing tonight, and they were discussed in more detail at the last meeting, as well as at our budget meeting November 1st. As indicated, the mayor's proposed balanced budget includes a number of assumptions, including a 0% property tax increase and also some utility rate increases. What these three ordinances propose are, in the sewer utility, a 2.99% increase, which represents the CPIU for Seattle, Brimerton, Tacoma, June over June. And for all of our Social Security recipients out there, you will note that your 2% raise this year is based upon the CPIW All United States. And there is always a variation between inflation in our region and inflation in our country, and this year, that spread is 0.99%. The sewer also includes an 80 cents per customer per month rate increase. That is the dollar amount necessary to fund the salary increases that were approved in March of 2016 and finally implemented this year. In the solid waste utility, it's a 2.99% increase, the same CPI discussion that I just had, with the exception of certain targeted items where there's no increase. And specifically, we're talking about refrigerators and appliances, some of those items that have round numbers, and we've got signage built for them, so we don't want to change the signage. I will say the same thing I said last time. We're concerned in this utility that there may be a proposal forthcoming from the county that could change our tipping fees. Our budget cannot withstand a tipping fee increase without a rate increase that would pass that on to the consumers, so just keep that in mind. The same is true in our recycling disposal fees. Our contract with Waste Management ends this year, and we've been working with folks at the transfer station at the county, trying to figure out how we can get our commingled recycles onto the tipping floor at the county, crushed, boxed, and available to go to Marketplace either by rail or truck. We think there's some real opportunity to increase competitiveness and drive down transportation costs on recycling, but we need some help to get there. So, another comment for the commissioner. And then, on the stormwater front, we've got the 2.99% rate increase plus $2 per ERU per month, and this $2 is the $2 that Phil was asking about. It funds the acquisition of the tractor and boom mower, as well as half of an FTE to take that work. And I'll just review that briefly. For those of you who don't recall, Skagit County transferred the Brickyard Creek responsibility to the city by eliminating the Brickyard Creek Subflood Control Zone, what are we, about five years ago? I think 2012. Pretty good memory. And the county, well, we were not at all in favor of this, and we're not at all happy about it. The county did retain the money that had been collected from those rate pairs, froze that, kept it in a fund, which they gave 100% of it to us, but it's a non-renewable resource. I think at that time, it had about $360,000, and we've been taking those dollars out in, you know, $30,000 or $50,000 a year increments. So, we always knew that those dollars would dry up. The 2018 budget assumes that the last of those dollars are spent to reimburse the city for its services in 2018. This rate increase helps to fill that gap going forward. It is not a surprise to us, you know, those dollars transitioning the responsibility from the rate pairs, from the county subflood control zone to the city is something we knew was going to happen. I think that's one of the main reasons why the City Council and the mayor at the time were not at all remotely excited to have that happen. But that's where we are today. So, that's what that rate increase does. So, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions either now or after any public testimony.
Erin, I received a few comments about this, and I know the reason why we went to the CPI was to create, to kind of buffer between the times when we have to do big jumps to make up deficits. Is there a third option? Is there anything else that we could do? Because I spoke with a couple people, and they're concerned, you know, Social Security, they're not getting increases. They're trying to keep up.
2%. 2% is their increase this year.
And, you know, they have tight budgets like the city does. What other options besides big jumps and CPI? I mean, what else can we do?
The challenge, of course, is our utility doesn't grow at the rate of inflation for the United States. You know, we're growing at our local regional cost, and that's built into the salaries we pay, our medical insurance premiums, cost of fuel, cost of electricity, parts, et cetera, et cetera. So, I guess I would say, I don't actually think 2.99% is fully reflective of our actual cost increases, and that's why you've seen over the years in our utilities, for example, in sewer, we're still operating with fewer employees than we were prior to the recession. And then, we see these stair-step jumps built in, like we're seeing tonight, you know, the $2... the $2 and the 80 cents. So, I don't know what other options there are. I mean, it's a pretty simple mathematical formula. We either have to spend less, which is either changing and reducing our service, or theoretically becoming more efficient or more lean, or, you know, we keep up with the rates to maintain the escalating costs, either gradually annually or through some stair-step manner. You know, this is something that I think Seadrwelly does really well, which is run very lean. You know, we certainly take you down and show you the facilities. Trash trucks are the best example. Leo was hoping to find some good tarps in the garbage system this week so he could put tires on top of them and get his trucks out of the snow. You know, we've got big needs, and they're not being met, even with 2.99%. So, I guess my real answer is, we're going to be asking for more money in the future, not less, to maintain the system and continue to provide the service that's being provided.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So, at this time, 8:11, I will open the public hearing on utility rate increases. If anyone from the public would like to comment, approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Mr. O'Neil?
I guess I don't understand. The last time I was up here, a couple weeks ago, that was three attempts, by the way. I don't, I don't remember, you know, I was wondering, I have a hard time, and, you know, I got calls from people that listen to this darned thing at home, and they don't understand what this relates into the average home or the, you know, the average. It's percentages, and it's based on ERU, and some people don't understand that. Could maybe broaden out a little bit on that, you know, what it means to the average person, how much it's going to be, and when you talk about these things coming up in the future, it'd be nice to, you know, when you talk about property tax increase and you evaluate whether you need it or not, you know, what are you talking about? I understand what you're saying, but, you know, dollars and cents, and we're talking about these things that, you know, every year, take a little bite, and, you know, some people probably say, you know, give us an idea of what we're looking at in the future, you know, as far as expenses along this line. Thanks.
Thank you, Dennis.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, want to suggest, in the, is it in the printed copy out there? Is that information in there?
Can you wait until the public?
Oh, sure, of course.
Hearing is closed.
Yeah.
Anybody else from the public for a public hearing for comments on this? So, at 8:13, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Sandstrom?
So, in the paperwork we have out in the lobby, do we have, is, does it show the price breakdown? Is, because I know in our packet, we see it.
Oh, yes. What, your packet, of course, is identical packet to what the public sees in the ordinances, but I think what, maybe what Dennis is asking is just, you know, make it real. So, I will tell you that in my family, we pay $111 and some cents per month for our city utilities. Beginning in January of 2018, if you adopt these three ordinances, my bill will go to approximately $117. So, the calculation is, go home and take your utility bill, multiply your bill by 1.0299, and then add $2.80, and that would give you a pretty close approximation to what the increase is. In my case, I believe it will be about $6 a month, if that's helpful.
Yeah, and, but then...
It does vary. I mean, the point you're making is depending on your trash size, and ERU is essentially an equivalent residential unit. That doesn't come to bear for our residential customers, they're all fixed, but for our commercial industrial customers, there is an equivalency that's built into the code, so it depends on your usage, but the same percentage would apply.
Yeah, but that information's in the packet that you should have in your hand. If you flip a couple pages past the motions, you'll see it.
Any other questions or comments by council? There are three recommended motions on page 41, beginning with ordinance 1886.
It's the motion to attach sewer rates by... Oh.
Find it.
It has red circles around it.
Just the first one, the sewer one, or all of them together?
They're individual motions.
Motion to adopt the attached ordinance, I make a motion to adopt the attached ordinance increasing the sewer rates by 2.99% plus 0.80 per ERU.
All right. Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Carnegie, seconded by Councilmember Johnson to adopt the attached ordinance, which would be 1886-17, increasing sewer rates by 2.99% plus 80 cents per ERU. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pros, say nay.
Nay.
Note that Councilmember Kinzer voted in the negative. Next motion concerns solid waste and recycling.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the attached ordinance increasing solid waste utility rates by 2.99%.
Motion was made by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Owen, to adopt a attached ordinance, which would be 1887, tax 17, increasing solid waste utility rates by 2.99%. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pros, say nay. And the motion carries. The third motion is under Stormwater, also on page 41.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1888, tax 17, an ordinance amending the fees and charges for the use of the city Seadrwelly's storm and surface water utility system.
Okay, motion was made, oh, I'm waiting for a second. Motion was made by Councilmember Lemley, seconded by Councilmember Owen, to approve ordinance 1888, tax 17, most to increase stormwater rates by 2.99% plus $2 per ERU. Is there any further discussion?
With my parking lot and footprint, yes, it will be a significant increase to me, but I'm going to vote for it anyway.
Good man. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pros, say nay. And the motion carries. Item three, petition to vacate unopened right-of-way at the Swift Center. That's page 52 to 60 in your packet. Aaron.
Well, it's public hearing night tonight, so going for the trifecta. This is something we talked about most recently on October 11th, when the city council adopted Resolution 973-17, setting tonight's date for a public hearing and directing our city clerk to find three prominent locations around the city to post signage. That was exciting, since we don't do that normally. So, just a quick review, the packet on page, let's see, it's overwritten there, must be page 60, has the map that kind of orients you to the right-of-way. So, this is a small strip of right-of-way that would, if you kind of imagine Fruitdale Road, there's a little gap, but then it would extend due north through the campus to the notably property line of the campus. That property line separates the Swift Center property from Skagit County.
Page 58?
Yeah. Page 58, excuse me, 58, from Skagit County Parkland. So, the request is to vacate that. This is part of the Port of Skagit's due diligence in moving forward with the acquisition and transfer of that property from DES, state ownership, to local control. In that process, the port, you know, purchased a title report. This was identified as kind of an encumbrance on the property, this unopened right-of-way. The state currently owns and maintains all of the roads at the Swift Center, and the port anticipates doing the same once they own it. So, there really is no value that I can see to the city continuing to own this unopened right-of-way. The request includes a further ask, which is to not charge the state for this right-of-way. Under RCW 3579, the city council has the authority to establish a price methodology. In this case, under the transfer agreement that was negotiated by virtue of the legislative proviso that authorizes the transfer of the Swift Center to the port, the transfer is triggered when the port and its local partners, which includes Skagit County government and the city of Seadrwelly, invest magic number five million dollars on the site. So, it doesn't actually transfer dollars to the state, but it invests the dollars into the site. When that $5 million number is reached, then the port is able to take ownership of the entire Swift Center site. So, these dollars would be counted toward that $5 million local investment in the site. So, it's not an insignificant request. I believe they calculated that dollar amount to be approximately $168,000. So, it's a two-pronged request. One is to vacate, and the second is to not charge anything, allowing the value of this vacated right-of-way to contribute towards the local investment. And Heather Rogerson's here from the Port of Skagit, sees the lead on behalf of the port for this project, and also the lead for our partnership working through this project. So, she may very well jump up at public comment time to say something else or answer your questions.
At 8:21, we will open the public hearing on a petition to vacate the unopened right-of-way at the Swift Center. Any member of the public care to speak for three minutes? Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you.
I need you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Heather Rogerson with the Port of Skagit, address 15400 Airport Drive in Burlington. And I just want to say thank you for your consideration of this request, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Rogerson? Very good. Anyone else from the public care to speak? Okay, at 8:22, I will close the public hearing. Council, the recommended motion, I believe, is on page 53. It will be ordinance number 1889-17.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance 1889, tax 17, an ordinance vacating unopened right-of-way at the Swift Center.
Second? Well, there was a race there. I was looking at Chuck. So, motion was made by Councilmember Lemley, seconded by Councilmember Owen, to adopt ordinance 1889, tax 17. A motion, an ordinance vacating unopened right-of-way at the Swift Center. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pros, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. This moves us on to new business. It's going to be a long night. Item one, available property tax refund levy. This is a first reading, page 61 to 63. Aaron, since Patsy's gone?
I don't know if the mayor mentioned it earlier, but Patsy's on an official intragovernmental exchange in the South America, Central America, Panama Canal region, so. It was an opportunity that presented itself at this time of year, when normally Patsy would be right here in Seadrwelly. So, our friends at the Mount Vernon Hospital continue to take property off of our rolls. This is, I think, the third time we've seen this crop up. So, as taxable properties get converted to non-taxable status, there's a process that allows those property owners to request abatement of taxes, and it becomes sometimes retroactive, and certainly, it occurs outside of a normal year. And in this case, we had that happen in 2017, and the result was, the city council levied $9,369.42 in general property tax and $1,976.91 in the public safety building bond tax. That one got paid off this year, so that must have been 2016 tax or something dangling from the past. In any case, you have the option to levy those dollars in addition to the 1% to make the city whole. So, remember, with property tax, you don't levy a percent, you levy a dollar amount. So, in the 2017 tax year, you levied whatever the dollar amount was, $1.8 million, and the Treasury's office is telling us, we can't collect, you know, approximately $11,000 of it because they were taken off the tax rolls. However, we know that you budgeted, and we're counting on it, so therefore, you can levy that next year to make up the difference. It's a one-time make-up levy. The question for you tonight is, what would you like to do? There's really three options. You can, you can take all of it, you can take part of it, or you can take none of it. And we didn't provide any ordinances for you, so we are looking for direction tonight, though, if you want to do something, so we can bring that back to you at the next meeting. I think there's a deadline of November 30, if I'm not mistaken, to get that back to the county.
And Aaron, do you have the total on that?
Well, it's $9,369 plus $1,976, so I guess that'd be, I think that's about, what, $11,330?
Impressive.
I could be totally wrong.
Very good. Any questions from council? So, this kind of, this behavior, I guess, on the part of the hospital, which is perfectly legal, and we can do nothing about, kind of puts a big hole in our budget, so I think Aaron's looking for direction on whether we want to get that money back or let it lie. It's up to you.
$11,246.33. Pretty close. Not bad.
Are you looking for a motion tonight?
Actually, it's the first reading.
It's the first reading. I'm just trying to...
I would certainly think that that would be something we would be interested in doing.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other comments before I open it to the public? Okay, under our new rules, you may speak for three minutes on this topic at this time. If anyone wants to talk on it, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Three minutes going once. Yes, sir.
My name's Robert Stanley, and I'm a hospital commissioner for District 304, and my address is 16624 Peterson Road in Manhattan, Burlington. And I just have a question. That's Hospital District 1, which is Mount Vernon, correct?
Yeah.
And can you explain to me what they're doing exactly?
Okay, I have to remind you, it's not a question and answer period, but if you have a question, you can tell us what your question is.
And we can address it.
Okay, well, I just think, I'd like to know what they're doing as far as specifically you're moving it from the tax rolls, they're moving their physicians, or, and I was just having a question just from a standpoint.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a 60-second answer for Mr. Stanley?
Yes, so, I don't have the precise property on this one. The prior-year examples, and I suspect we're in a similar boat, is at the pavilion, as Public Hospital District Number 1 has acquired private physician practices and turned them into hospital-based practices. The private practices paid property taxes, the hospital district, so the same as Hospital District 304 is exempt, and they take it off the tax rolls. So, I'll have to find out exactly which parcel this applies to, but that's been what's happened twice now, is relating to that type of acquisition.
If you leave your contact information, we can get you a more specific answer.
Okay, I have to say, they're moving their physicians.
Okay, that's not appropriate at this time, but, thank you. Anybody else to publicly comment on this? Okay, I think what I heard was, is we're interested in getting that money back. Is that right? Okay, that direction you need for next time?
Yeah, we'll bring this back then as a second read item, and we've got the, the forms are in the packet, so we'll get that back and make sure we know how to fill them out correctly.
Okay. Okay. Item two on your new business, the 2018 budget, also a first reading, page sixty-four to seventy-three in your packet.
Yes, so the detailed budget was presented on November 1st, uh, that's the mayor's balanced budget. Of course, the, um, city council adopts the budget at the fund level, which is what's represented on, on pages, uh, sixty-five, sixty-six, and sixty-seven. That's the actual ordinance that adopts the budget by fund. Uh, the detailed budget is in your November 1st packet and we spent, uh, a pretty significant amount of time last week walking through that, both at the high level in terms of trends and some of the charts and graphs, and also at the, at the specific line item level. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, I think probably under the budget conversation is where it would be appropriate if the council wants to discuss the community action, uh, in more detail. Uh, it would be nice to build that into the budget, although you certainly have the ability to make that an amendment at a later date as well. Budget's currently on track to be presented to you on November 21st for a second reading and, uh, possible action that night.
And are, are there paper copies in the back for the public if they care for them? I think I see them back there.
Yeah, there are three public review copies at the back of the room. They're not to take home, uh, it is on our website and they also live at our finance counter, so anytime somebody cares to come and review it, you can check one out at the finance counter and sit, sit by the fireplace and peruse it, but it is also on the website.
Any questions or comments from council? Okay, um, at this time, I will open public comment on this item. Anybody interested? Very well. I think that leaves us down to good of the order. We will be going into executive session for about fifteen minutes under RCW 42.30140, sub-paragraph four. Uh, that is collective bargaining discussion and also under RCW 4230.110, sub-paragraph one, sub-B, which is real estate acquisition. And, uh, if you're not here when we get back, uh, thank you all for coming. Yes, so we are back from executive at 8:49 with no action.
I hope that we adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Okay, a motion to adjourn, a second, we're done for tonight. Thank you all for coming.
We're done. Just like that.
Hey, Keith?
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity...